Jay Burns.
Yes.
Jesse Fennelly.
Here.
Joe Newhouse.
Here.
David Ragsdale.
Present.
Jay Samaha.
Here.
Jen Bryson, here. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, neither division with liberty and justice.
Fix that out. All right. We'll start with approval of items in consensus. First, we have approval of minutes, April 8th, 2020, regular session. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mr. Fennelly. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. April 15th, 2020, there are motion? Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale, seconded by Mr. Samaha, all in favor? Excellent. That's unanimous. Sorry, my grids are, everyone's a little all over the place on my, um, on my grids here, so I'm trying to... Chris, is there any way to put the school committee members across the whole top or no?
No, there's no way to format it.
All right. We have second reading, approval of school committee policies, DA through DKC. There's one update, the data review was not added to DK, but I haven't received any other comments or questions. Is there a motion for approval? Mrs. Burns, is there a second? Mr. Fennelly, all in favor of accepting those? Mr. Samaha, you with me?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just making sure you're not... Okay, excellent, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have warrants, G420, G421, R225, 226, 227, L66, 67, and FS31. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mr. Ragsdale, all in favor? That is unanimous. We have payroll ending 4/22/2020. Is there a motion? Mr. Fennelly, thank you, seconded by Mr. Bjork, all in favor? That is unanimous. Then we have warrants CB10 and CB11. Is there a motion? Mr. Bjork, seconded by Mr. Fennelly, all in favor? And that is, I'm sorry, two abstentions? No, one abstention. Thank you. And then sped 22 and 23, is there a motion? Mr. Ragsdale, seconded by Mr. Samaha, all in favor? So that is four and three abstentions. Mrs. Dixie, do you have that?
I do, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. All right. Next up, we have our superintendent's report, Dr. Brand.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. There are three items within the superintendent's report this evening, and it's a pleasure to be able to address each of them, specifically starting off with a couple of updates as it relates to leadership searches that are, we're in the midst of right now. Yesterday, hopefully the community is aware, there was an update sent out regarding the search for a new assistant superintendent to replace Dr. Regan as he, as he transitions to a new opportunity following the close of this school year. Pleased to be able to share the fact that the search committee identified and advanced to me for further consideration four candidates. This is an informational item that was sent out yesterday. We'll add it to the packet. But if I may, just to briefly highlight those four that are moving forward in the process. First off, Mr. Adam Pollantione, I hope I'm saying that correctly, is currently the principal at the Galvin Middle School in Wakefield. He has been in that role since 2015. He holds a number of other different leadership experiences, including service at the Hanover Middle School in Hanover, Massachusetts, as well as assistant principalships also at Galvin, as well as a guidance counselor and assistant principal not too far from home here, and that was in Tewksbury. Adam will be visiting the district tomorrow and specifically to share with this opportunity the fact that we have opportunity for members of the community to meet our candidates. We're trying to replicate, replicate the process as much as we would if we were in session physically. And for those interested in the community, there is information that we have pushed out there and think we'll be making that available on our website for people to tune in at 4 o'clock tomorrow on a Zoom meeting opportunity to meet Adam. Our second semifinalist is Ms. Rebecca Hyde. She is currently the Assistant Director of Statewide Systems of Support at the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. In that role, she's responsible for leading elementary, middle, and high school students at schools, sorry, with their work specifically around vision and planning, with a focus on teaching and learning. She's also served a role at the Department of Education, including District Assistance Lead for DESI, as well as Principal in Lawrence, and Language and Literacy Coordinator with some of the hallways of her past experience. Ms. Hyde will be visiting the district also tomorrow, and she will be available to meet with interested members of the community tomorrow afternoon at 4:45. Our third candidate of four is Ms. Sarah Hardy. She is currently the principal of Colonial Park School in Stona, Massachusetts. She's been in that role since 2014. She also has other leadership experiences, including principal of the South School, also in Stona, and a principal designated at the South Grove School in Chelmsford. Ms. Hardy will be visiting the district, moving staff, so on, in Wilmington this Friday. And for interested members of the community who might wish to get to know Ms. Hardy better, she will be meeting at 4:00. And finally, our fourth candidate as a semifinalist is Ms. Christine Elliott. She's currently the Director of Curriculum for the Tri-Town School Union, that's Boxford, Milton, and Topsfield. She's served in that role since 2010, and she has had longer service within that community, as well as prior to that, English Language Arts and Social Studies and Social Support Specialist. So she will be joining, I'm sorry, the district for a visit this Friday, and members of the community are welcome to meet Ms. Elliott at 4:45 if they're interested. We, we are going to, again, as mentioned, replicate the process for this search, just like those of previous searches. This will also include a visit to the candidates' home districts next week. We're currently still in the process of scheduling those. But we're excited about, we're excited about our candidate field here. We think we have some very experienced folks, and we'll look forward to meeting them throughout, of course, the next number of days. Item 4B, a leadership search that has come to conclusion. This is an item that is in your packet and for members of the community who might be interested. This is the announcement, the text that went out to specifically the West Intermediate School community. And that's about the principal announcement there with the appointment, recent appointment of Dr. Edward Foster, who will be taking over for Mr. Shaw at the conclusion of this school year from his role as principal there. Mr. Foster comes to us with an extensive array of experience as a teacher and administrator. Thirty-plus years of public educational experience have him serve in a number of different districts. Mr. Foster, we had the opportunity to meet Mr. Foster here in Wilmington, and we also visited through a virtual platform his current school and district staff. Feedback gathered throughout the process identified Dr. Foster as an educational leader who believes in the importance that vision plays in the work of a school when it's built upon the input and ideas of others. So we want to formally extend a welcome to Dr. Foster. And finally, item 4C, virtual parent webinars. We're very excited to be able to bring this to the attention of our Wilmington community. Thank you to specifically Ms. Murray, Christine Murray, who's been working very hard behind the scenes to try and put together and make connections for our staff and our families equally of importance during this very difficult time of COVID-19. And this is a collaboration with McLean Hospital, and it's specifically of trying to help our families contend with these challenges in the COVID-19 crisis. There'll be an opportunity for these virtual webinars and members who are interested to be a part of those. The speakers who will be a part of these virtual webinars will be sharing strategies for supporting children and youth in tough times, of course, such like these. Topics include normal responses to this type of event, how to try and maintain compassion for ourselves and, of course, our children during these times, and also hopefully try to hone in on possible skills that can help educators and as parents and guardians to manage these tough emotions. So the information on that is included in the packet as well. And with that, I'm having to take any questions if members of the committee might have regarding any of the above items.
Are there any questions from the committee, Mr. Samaha?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment about the, the parent webinars. I think this is really, really fantastic. You know, it's such a trying time. I think it was the guest that called that said that this was a paradigm shift in education. It's truly a paradigm shift in parenting, I think, well. So I'm really excited about that, and I like the fact that it's, it's pre-recorded, so it's not like you, parents have to go on at X time. I think that's a huge, huge benefit. The other thing, I guess my question about it, though, is how is that going to be advertised? How is it going to get sort of pushed out so families know about it?
I'm not sure that it's happened yet, and Tristan might be able to help me out with this. But what I do know is that we will be following similar, the similar approach, and that is certainly pushing this out via email. We posted to all of our families, posted on our websites. We have a number of different social media streams that I know Ms. Murray's connected with and has up and running this pro. So those sort of usual channels, I'm not sure, Tristan, can you help out? Has anything gone out yet regarding this, do you recall? I just don't remember.
Not from my end.
Okay.
There has been an email gone out that I know I saw for families to send in their questions if they had any. Maybe Ms. Murray can jump in here.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Thank you. Yes, so they are working on the webinars currently, and it was an opportunity which was great. If anyone has any questions or concerns regarding their student, that they can send in any type. We've already been getting some really nice responses from the parents. So if you do have, you know, it will be anonymous that we send these questions and concerns to the psychologist from McLean's. So please email me those questions, and I will get them to them. They will incorporate it into their webinars, and it's by grade level. So there are two separate webinars, and there will be further communication going out regarding it of how we're going to get that out to parents. And again, it's in the convenience of your own home at whatever time you want to watch it. So stay tuned. We will be sending out some more communication regarding when those become available.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the committee? Mr. Ragsdale?
I just wanted to ask when, when Mr. Shaw originally announced his retirement, there was a plan that he was going to stay on beyond the end of the year and sort of assist with the transition until, I believe, it was early next fall, perhaps October. And I wanted to know if that was still the current plan?
So, yes, it is. Certainly, he's not leaving. Thank you for the opportunity to clarify. So he's not formally moving on from the district at the very end of June. We are still trying to fine tune and finalize, rather, those specific details, but it is my intention to have him available. This is a, this will be a very, a unique opportunity to be able to benefit from, obviously, in this case, the outgoing principal of Mr. Shaw, to help transition Mr. Dr. Foster to his role. And, you know, when I think about this reality before us, making even the assumption that we're able to physically be present in buildings, gosh forbid if that's not even the case in July, all the more that will be required to help orientate a new incoming principal to the work that's ahead of them and the work within the building. So Mr. Shaw will be around for a little bit of time, that's right, until the very first part of the fall. I don't, it won't be the plan to have Mr. Shaw as a permanent presence in the building at the beginning of school. I think that that would be difficult to manage, but we certainly will benefit from Mr. Shaw's assistance with the transition. Well, thank you.
Thanks. And, and I also just also wanted to comment to community members who may be watching the meeting to really encourage them to come to the Zoom meetings for the assistant superintendent candidates. It's, you know, not something that you see on a daily basis or get direct communication to the way you do from your building principal, but this is a very important position in the district that has a lot of influence on what your children do in the classroom. And so I really strongly encourage people to come to those meetings with some questions ready and to, you know, be able to provide feedback on these candidates.
And just if I may, on that point, we, I mean, we know it's a very, very difficult, very trying time. It goes without saying for everybody. And so it's another Zoom meeting, another commitment perhaps, but to echo Dr. Ragsdale, this is important. I believe it's important. It is an opportunity to, in this case, provide myself with important feedback around who, who our stakeholders believe would be the next appropriate person for this role. I'll take the opportunity to underscore what I say every time there's an opportunity, and that is the feedback that is generated through these searches that's collected. And we make sure through Mrs. Stern Armstrong's efforts to make a survey available for all of our groups that meet with these candidates. That includes staff, that includes our parent guardians. And I very carefully review that feedback, as do other members of the central office team. And that's a really important piece to help inform the final decision. So please do join us if you're able to.
Great. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. Just a quick reminder, it looks as though almost everybody is muted now. There is quite a bit of feedback if you're not muting yourself when other people are speaking. I know it can become complicated to mute and unmute, but especially when there's sort of a longer talk or presentation. If we could all stay on mute except for the person presenting, I think that would be helpful for everyone who's listening. Our next item of business is public comments. So as we sort of figure out how to do our meetings through Zoom, we have, we are doing public comments submitted the day of by 4:00 PM. And it is my understanding, Mrs. Dixie, that no comments were submitted by 4:00 PM. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So we have no public comment this evening. We will move on to old business. There is no old business. We will move on to new business, which brings us to 7A, which is the COVID-19 update. Dr. Brand.
Yes, thank you again. So this has become, as you know, a bit of a standing agenda section, I guess, if you will, under new business. And I certainly foresee that to be the case going forward, until we, we will get through this. There are three broad areas this evening under 7A and the respective subsections. The first, this is an item that we come back to you on now that we, we have the Governor's Declaration of School Closures extending through until the end of the year. It's, it seems only appropriate and is in line with what we brought before you as a committee to consider, and that is payment of salary to hourly, hourly, sorry, employees during the school closure. There is a memo in your packet to this end, and again, it would be my recommendation to you to consider to take a vote to approve the continuation of payments of regular compensation and benefits to the Wilmington Public Schools' salaried and hourly employees who have been in active status during the period when Wilmington Schools first went into closure, which was back in the middle of March, as you recall. And in this case now, with the closure and the end in sight through until at least June 15th, continuation of that status through until that point in time. There is a recommended motion you'll see at the bottom of the agenda. I'm happy to, or Mr. Ruggiero is happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this.
Mrs. Burns, don't forget to unmute.
Can I ask you to, does this encompass any of the athletic coaches or junior varsity coaches? Or is this just totally separate from that piece?
It is, this is specific to salary compensation or hourly. This specific item does not include, this does not include stipends specifically.
The stipends.
We deal with those separately.
Okay, thank you. I'm so sorry.
Thank you. Other questions about 7A and the recommended motion? Seeing none, would someone like to read the motion? Thank you, Mrs. Burns.
I move that the Wilmington School Committee approve the continuation of payments of regular compensation and benefits to its salaried and hourly employees who have been on active status during the period when the Wilmington Public Schools have been closed due to coronavirus-related issues per mass state order from March 13th, 2020, until the mandatory closure orders lifted by the appropriate state authority or June 15th, 2020, the last day of the 2019, 2020 school year, whichever is sooner, unless otherwise required by law.
There's, it's a little different than the motion I have, but that seems to be correct. Is that, did I miss anything? I'm just, it's a little different than what I have written, so I just want to make sure.
If she did read the correct motion.
Okay, great. Seconded by Mr. Samaha, thank you. All in favor? Do a show of hands, and that is unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Brings us to 7B.
Sure, I will take that as well. 7B, there is a, there's a copy of the announcement that recently was put out by Commissioner Riley from the Department of Education. I think it was April 20th or 21st, I think it's dated 20th, November 21st. And as I think everyone is well aware, certainly with the state of closure now in Massachusetts of all public and private schools through until the end of the school year, that is necessitating additional guidance that has begun to be put forth to districts. I shared that with our staff and with our community. There's a number of documents that we are now carefully reviewing and specifically taking a look at how or in what ways we may need to adjust our current learning plan in the state that we are in right now in Wilmington. All districts, of course, are in that, in that same place. I'll just take the opportunity to highlight what really Commissioner is, has identified as sort of a framework, if you will, for how he is viewing these closures. He's identified them as phases. Phase one was the initial school closure, time period and trying to attend to health and well-being is really the priority. You saw efforts, of course, unfold around the provision of food and such, support in different ways to families. Phase two was the initial remote learning recommendations, and that was back, it seems like a very long time ago, but it wasn't all that long ago in terms of what remote learning was recommended to, the orientated around. This now brings us to what he's calling phase three, and that is remote learning that will now take us through until the end of this current school year. And then phase four, which we are not to yet, but which he is identifying as the reopening of school. Clearly, much more work to come, much more guidance to learn as we move forward. But those are the sort of the four phases. I think the Department and the Commission have been very good about posting information for the members of the community who might be interested in learning more about this. The Department of Ed's website is rich with documents. It's rich with resources as well to be supportive of our families and our students during this time. So that's really just for informational purposes. And if I may, I'll just keep on going through to 7C, which are just some more general updates, nothing in the packet. But just seems, seems an opportune time to just share some of these in no particular, particular order. I obviously reference the guidance, and we are working with a leadership team and with the association around exactly what the implications are for Wilmington going forward. I also thought I'd take the opportunity and share with the school committee and our community thoughts of, thoughts that I have in terms of beginning to put together a committee that would include representatives from the school district, as well as equally important, I think, during this, during this time period, of our town and local officials. Ms. Newhouse from the Board of Health, Mr. Hall, for example, Mr. Hooper. As we collectively start to look ahead to what reopening the school will look like. And while the thoughts around what reopening looks like, perhaps in the summer or sort of in September is one thing, we also do have a more near-term reality to start to think about, and that is figuring out a safe way to get staff into schools before the end of the school year. As I've reminded so many, you know, we left the schools and our classrooms rather abruptly back in the middle of March. Things do need to be cleaned up. They need to be put away. And equally, the fact is that we have a lot of personal belongings of students in your schools, as I'm sure you all know. So it's that kind of thinking that I think we need to start with. It's not that there's any urgency to this, but it's probably something that's going to take a little bit of time to figure out a plan that we can be supportive of, and that obviously ensures the safety and well-being of everybody. So we are also taking a look, you know, sort of in the same spirit of what you just took the action on for the continuation of salary and payments for our employees. There continue to be a number of other aspects behind the scenes, and we will certainly bring these to the committee as we feel is most appropriate. Things like reimbursements or credits for tuition collected for some of our programs. We don't have many programs that collect tuitions, as you know, but we're trying to contend with that. Transportation providers as well, districts are working through that. So there are, there continue to be a myriad of other things behind the scenes. Many of these largely Mr. Ruggiero is dealing with and he's doing, he's doing a great job with, but it continues to consume quite a bit of time, but we're doing the very best we can to look through these as quickly as we can. Again, of course, we bring those to the committee, if not for updates, but action as appropriate. And finally, just to take the opportunity of something that I know is growing as an area of interest and concern and thought, and that is what about any end-of-the-year activities that may have otherwise been planned? And I suppose specifically, not exclusively is this just for seniors, but there are some, some things like transition open houses, orientations for families that would be moving up to a school that we're thinking about. But in particular around our seniors. And I had a nice conversation earlier in the week with Ms. Peters, a high school principal, about this very thing. As you might imagine, she's been having a, a many conversations with members of her team and her staff as our districts everywhere. And how best to think about honoring our seniors and trying to make decisions that seem premature right now, to be honest, but trying to think with a view to what might be possible. My sense, as you might imagine, is that some people might be getting a little bit antsy about this. We should have graduation. What should that look like? When might that take place? And again, as difficult as it is, patience really needs to be, needs to be underscored here. I wanted to take the opportunity to say that there's thinking happening, but the reality is we're also having to wait for some guidance from our local and state officials around the health guidance and what will be possible. So there, there have been no final decisions made yet, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to, to share the fact that there's work that's definitely begun, and it will continue. And if anyone knows Ms. Peters, and I know many of you know her much better than I, you can bet that if there's a way to honor our seniors, it will be she who will figure out a way to do that and will be most committed to trying to do something. It's just what that something looks like right now that still has to be considered. So with all of that, that's really all of the updates under the section of general COVID-19 updates. But I'm very happy to take any questions.
Questions, Mr. Ragsdale?
So at the, I think it was the April 8th meeting, we took a vote as far as joining other districts that use North Reading Transportation to renegotiate some of the transportation fees so that they would be in a position to provide transportation if we were going to open before the school year ended. Now that we know that that's not going to happen, what is going to be the status of that renegotiation or that, that policy?
Mr. Ruggiero? I can speak to that. So we have entered negotiations with North Reading Transportation and as well as seen collaborative for special education transportation. So where we are now is the districts have a reduction of 22% from the, the normal fees for North Reading Transportation. from the, the normal fees for North Reading Transportation, and we're entering into a memorandum of agreement with them. Again, to make sure that we have drivers when school starts in the, in the fall and they're not to lay off their drivers. If they receive any incremental funds from the federal or state government, they're to pass that on to districts. And they're to have drivers available if we do need them for anything and all their training and so forth. So that's where we stand now. And all the districts have the same rate, if you will, of a reduction of twenty-two percent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the committee? All right, seeing none, that brings us to summer programming.
Yes, item, item number eight, you will find also two items, two memos that are in the packet. But honestly, it's, this sort of is a continuation of the general COVID-nineteen updates in the sense that, and the conversation around the graduation. In the sense that I thought it would be an important time to share with the committee and the community the fact that most certainly planning is underway. But I would, I would urge the insertion of the word preliminary or provisional. I think everyone is certainly aware that there's much more guidance that has to come from the, from the state and from the local level in terms of what summer programming will look like. In a, in a recent conversation with Ms. Newhouse, a board of health from Wilmington, also earlier in the week, this is one of the topics that she has shared with me is a, is a very hot topic across the conversations that she's had, not just locally, but across the state. From what I've heard, unless there's been something more definitive as a decision at the state level, there have been no final decisions made about whether or not summer programs can happen. But there are many things pointing to the reality that they probably won't. However, our two programs, and really we have three, and that's special education programming, but that's, that's not really, that has to be specifically addressed this evening. But also certainly be mentioned. But as I've come to learn, the CARES program and the athletic program are two very, very popular programs in Wilmington. These are large programs that require an awful lot of planning and orchestration as well as hiring. And so in my conversations with Ms. Parker, as well as Mr. Harrison, I've indicated to them the intention for them to begin their preliminary planning, and that's what's captured in these memos that I'll bring your attention to this evening. So first with CARES, Ms. Parker has been doing some, some considerable thinking, I think, as I outlined in her memo around what the possibilities might be to try and adjust the CARES program. Right now, tentatively, if there were no restrictions at the state or local level, the plan is to open up the CARES program on Monday, June twenty, based upon the governor's time. I will share that for all of these discussions, we, we are certainly talking with Ms. Newhouse, Ms. Crowe as well too, making sure that we call in the health officials to these conversations. You can see in the memo some of the things that she's been thinking about. Some of the things that might take some shape and form in terms of elimination of off-site field trips, potentially reducing program hours, potentially reducing the number of students that are in attendance. So this is very provisional indeed, but it, I bring it forward to you this evening again to underscore the fact that work has begun. Thinking is certainly underway, but we cannot commit to this right now. She's planning to open up, as you can see in the memo, the ability for families to register through community pass, but not collecting any, any fees, as I understand it right now. At least that's the plan. So we will, we're obviously working very closely with her and hand in hand with our, our health officials. Once we know more, whether it's a final decision around when we can begin or if we could begin, we'll certainly make sure that the community is part of this conversation. I know that many, many take advantage of and quite honestly rely upon the CARES program for, for their families. The second item, also a very large and very popular program, is the summer athletic, or as it's known, the Wildcat Summer Clinics. Mr. Harrison has been doing some preliminary thinking as well, working with some possible dates that might be the latter part of June, or perhaps it could be sometime into July. And again, all predicated on what guidance is coming down from, from our health officials. So he has run through what the respective anticipated cost would be for the clinics. So again, it's, we're not saying that these are happening for certain, nor are we saying that they're canceled, but work is underway and we will obviously keep abreast of any new guidance and directive that is going to come down from my health officials. I'm happy to take any questions to committee members that might have either of those two.
Any questions from the committee? Mr. Samaha?
Yeah, I was just, I was just looking at the, the start date of June twenty-ninth and how that's about two weeks after school closes. Is that typically when CARES, summer CARES starts? Is, would that amount of time in between or?
I know the person better than I to be able to define what it means that. Mr. Roggerio, can you help me out with that?
Yeah, no, it would typically start the Monday or Tuesday after school got out, depending on where, what the last day was. In a, in a normal or typical year, I guess, if we were talking to, if we were to get out the fifteenth of June, the program would probably start the twenty-second or twenty-third. You know, the following Monday or Tuesday, most likely, you know, either Monday or Tuesday.
Has there, has there been any thought about maybe perhaps, I mean, again, it's likely that all of this is just, is so early to even really be talking about, but um, you know, I, I just wonder if if it is gonna happen, you know, is there a possibility of that date shifting or is that sort of, if it, if it is able to be run, is that a sort of set in stone?
Try and respond because again, I, I think that, I suppose in large measure, it would depend upon when exactly there's the clarity around what this could look like. You know, if, if for some reason, that seems like somewhat magical right now, given unfortunately the stated things, but but if there was, if there was a clear picture that summer programs at the local level could reopen as of June fifteenth, then I think that, and if that decision were forthcoming within the next short period of time, I would imagine, I don't want to speak for her, but I would imagine Ms. Parker could certainly have enough lead time to get things into place. I, I, I think that date right now, as is all of this, just has to be considered flexible. You know, conversely, if it wasn't until the latter part of May that any kind of guidance was forthcoming that cleared the path for this kind of program to open, it might be the case that there's going to be some definite time necessary to adjust plans accordingly. So I, I think that that's sort of like right now being considered the worst-case scenario, if you will, if the program can run throughout the summer. I, I know I recognize your point. Families would love this to be able to start as quickly as possible. I'm sure Ms. Parker would like to do the same too.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, Mr. Raxdale?
So if, if it turns out that we can't run the athletic camps, then that has a big effect on the athletic budget. So what, what consequences follow from that with our FY twenty-one budget, which we have approved but has not been approved at town meeting yet?
If I may, as you know, that program brings, nets us about forty thousand a summer. So that would be up to me and the athletic director to do whatever we can to close that gap, if you will. It's, it's, you know, will be a little bit of an issue in twenty-one, but we'll collaboratively work together with the superintendent and figure out how to bridge that and to cover those expenses.
Thank you, Mr. Roggerio. Any other comments about the summer programming? Seeing none, that brings us to the vaping committee update. Just like Dr. Brand, Christine Murray and Doreen Crowe.
First I will be able to do that. I don't know that the other two will.
Alice, are you there? Oh, Christine Murray, sorry.
I, I'll start and then I'll turn it over to, to Christine, certainly. So there is a, a great presentation that is in your packet for members of the community who might wish to draw upon the information in here. As you, as you will recall, last year, there was quite a bit of conversation and planning respectively around our district and thinking about the health and well-being of our students specifically to what has, as I think everyone's well aware, become a pretty significant issue. And that's vaping by, by our youth, not just our youth, but certainly in this context here. And so Ms. Crowe and Ms. Murray have been very active, both behind the scenes and, and out in front as it relates to grant committee and really trying to reshape the direction that as a district we're taking with obviously the utmost concern around our student health. And so the thought tonight, one of those items that is an effort to try and keep some degree of normalcy happening. And it was always the intent, intention to report out on the work that this committee has been doing to date, and that was around this time period in which we had thought that this would be appropriate and timely to do. And so that's what the thought is here tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Murray.
Thank you, Dr. Brand, and thank you, school committee, for allowing us the opportunity to provide an update on our vaping diversion efforts. So we'll be talking about the progress that we've made as a working group to address the goals, am I a mute? Oh, sorry. To address the goals, the grant that we did receive for the Wilmington e-cigarette education and policy initiative through the CHINA fifteen collaborative grant. So last school year, as Dr. Brand mentioned, the Wilmington Public Schools established a committee to address the ongoing concerns that we had around vaping in our schools, primarily the middle school and high school. So the committee took some time to collaborate and discuss the current trend of student vaping. We updated the Wilmington handbooks at the middle school and high school level, and we really discussed the best practices for a diversionary program. A lot of research went around on what would be the best avenue for alternate to discipline. And we did receive funding to promote some of our efforts through the CHINA fifteen collaborative grant. And the committee last year was comprised of Doreen Crowe, myself, Christopher Phillips, Jeanette Quirk, Samantha Reeve, and we did have some student representation. Patrick O'Mahony, Emma Reind, Colton Sullivan and Jocelyn White. And I was just, have to share that I did hear from one of our student reps that they are pursuing a nursing degree and going to Regis College in the fall. So this person was such a great advocate to us in the committee last year. So we really appreciate her efforts and congratulations to Jocelyn, Jocelyn White. So in the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year, as we mentioned, CHINA fifteen did award us a grant of nineteen thousand five hundred dollars to focus on the goals of the committee. So there were three specific areas that we will get into, into detail. Increase awareness. So some of the progress we've had to date is by providing additional educational supports for the Wilmington community, including educational programs for the community, some updated signage for the middle school and high school that we'll talk a little bit further about. Increase, in increasing education at the middle, I'm sorry, the intermediate level. The second area that we focused on in our grant was to further investigate and develop a diversionary program and resources to support that. So the committee did update the school handbook policy, as we mentioned, to develop those proactive alternatives to discipline and by creating a diversion program. So we'll get into the details of that in a little bit. And for number three, the alternate ways of detection, we really want to look at other avenues. So this part of the project was very interesting and it's still ongoing. But it included the introduction of technology supports to assist our administration in the enforcement of e-cigarette use on our school properties. So we'll talk briefly about each goal and where we're at in our project. So we did have the opportunity to have two speaker series this year. The Wilmington Community CARES event, which we held in November at the middle school, and we had a keynote speaker, John Maddelman. He presented, well, the program was well-attended, over a hundred parents, guardians and staff were present. And the program included a community resource panel presentation. So we did have represented, representation from various community resources such as Riverside Community Care, the Wilmington Substance Abuse Coalition, the Wilmington Health and Recovery Coordinator from the Wilmington Police Department. Roots Coalition was representation, was also there. Students from the SAD were there, so they were able to give an update of what they do at the high school as far as students against destructive driving. The Edinburgh Center, Wilmington Family Council, and the NAN Project, which focuses on suicide awareness, was also there. John was very engaging. We've had him there in the past. He has been such a great resource to us. There were several questions from the audience, and overall, the program was well-received and successful. The second community event that we had this year was Marijuana Vape and You, and that was held in January at the Saint Thomas Church, also known as the Parish of Transfiguration. And this event was planned in partnership with the Wilmington Substance Abuse Coalition. So we had Rick Cresto was our keynote speaker, and there were panelists. We had a nurse leader there from the Cambridge Health Alliance. The WPD deputy and from the Wilmington Police, and we also had a licensed social worker there from the Addiction Recovery Management Service. So it was really a, a great group of experts that really focused on educating the community members for really a great night about awareness around vaping and marijuana. I would say the turnout was less than the community event that we had with John Maddelman, but there was approximately fifty participants, including some students that were there. So it was really engaging that they were able to ask questions anonymously through an online system. And overall, I, I feel like the evening went well and everyone had a few important takeaways from the program. As you can see on the slide here, we have an up-to-date signage that we're working on for the middle school and high school to really, the signs that we have now really just have tobacco on them or a sign of a cigarette. So if you can see here, it'll be a nice visual of the new updated vapes and e-cigarettes that students might be exposed to, just to provide more awareness in our schools. So we'll be installing roughly about twenty per building at the middle school and high school level. We've been working closely with the building department, and those will be ordered and put up around our schools, which includes, you know, just more awareness for people that are entering our buildings and for the students and staff that are in the buildings to really have that updated signage. We were in the process of looking into a vaping curriculum as the schools were closing for the intermediate level. So we will be working closely again with Laura Stinson on that once schools reopen. We'll get a little bit further into goal number two. Doreen will take us into that.
Thank you, Christine. So goal number two is to further investigate and develop diversionary programming and resources. The focus is on first-time offenders. Students that are offenders for the first time will receive a one-day in-school suspension, and they'll participate in vape educate. This is an online course that's geared toward middle and high school students. It provides vital information on e-cigarettes, vaping and their use. The topics of the program include what is vaping, vaping health risks, our marketing targets, the youth, vape addiction, and the last part is society, vape and you. The course contains short quizzes constructed for each lesson to provide students an opportunity to actively learn and remember the materials presented. Including each of the five units, the students take an assessment for which they must score at least eighty percent in order to pass and move on to the next unit. The results are emailed to the administrator in charge of the program. Wilmington Public Schools purchased fifty licenses for the district. And for our current data for this school year, three middle school students and three high school students participated in the program. This year, a major focus has been primarily on the development of a five-week vaping diversion program. A posting went out to school staff for six vaping diversion program tutors to help develop the vaping diversion program at the middle and the high school levels. The group is comprised of school nurses, health and PE educators, and a social worker. Other representation includes school administrators and representation from the Wilmington Police Department. The working group has been meeting monthly with the goal of developing the five-week vaping diversion program. In addition, group members spent time researching and gathering resources to include in each week's lesson. You received a copy of the brochure in your packet with more detailed information. We'd like to give a shout out to Mrs. Brown, Ms. Federici, Ms. Reeve, Mrs. Simpson, and Mrs. Tritz for their teamwork and commitment to the program. Just so that our viewers could see what the brochure looks like, this is the inside of the brochure. And a detailed summary of the goals and what each week entails. There's a pre and post check-in with a school building administrator. Week one is for health education, and they review the adverse effects of tobacco, vaping, and e-cigarettes. For week two, that's the medical overview that includes nicotine sickness and the scary medical truth. Week three is marketing of youth and legal updates. Week four is motivational interviews, self-reflection, and cycle of change. And week five is the student project. Week six is an additional week that's required for students who participate in school-sponsored athletics or co-curricular activities. A large component of the five-week program is is family engagement. Families will be provided with education and resource materials around vaping to help support their child in the program. Goal three, alternate ways of detection. Christine already talked about this a little bit. We're in the process of purchasing vape detectors. Those would be installed in some of the bathrooms at Wilmington High School. And this is how those work. If if a vape is detected, an alert would be sent to an administrator. In the event that the detector is tampered with, the system will produce an audible alarm, and an alarm would be sent to the administrator. As you can see in the picture in the slide, we've been working with the OIT Department and Public Works to install a demo device. We've had multiple meetings with one vendor, and our plan was to demo the vape detectors last month to allow administration to opportunity to test out the system. But with the school closure, we have, we had to make changes in that plan, and we'll plan to revisit these efforts once school is reopened. For next steps, the district will continue to monitor new policies and initiatives set forth from the vaping diversion committee. We'll install the vape detector demo devices prior to making a purchase. We'll begin piloting the five-week vape diversion program. And two families have reached out showing interest in providing proactive education to their students. We'll purchase up-to-date no-smoking signage, and we'll research and introduce vaping curriculum at the intermediate level.
So we'd really like to thank members of the School Committee for supporting this grant. The Central Office Leadership Team has been really supportive with some big changes in this grant and some new technology that we're introducing. The vaping committee, who started all of this research and really came up with the ideas for the grant, the diversion program tutors who have been working hard all year on their own time, and also in our monthly meetings to come up with a five-week diversion program. Wilmington Police Department has been active in helping us with the grant as well as attending the vaping meetings. The Wilmington Substance Abuse Coalition, we're constantly giving updates at our monthly meetings of our efforts at the school system and in how we can support it through the community. Wilmington Public Works, George Hooper has been helping us with every avenue from the vaping detectors to the signage that we want to install at our schools. OIT, I couldn't do this without them. We all couldn't as far as the vaping detectors. It's a whole new world of how it's working out a connection so they can be up and running in our schools. CHINA 15, none of this wouldn't be possible without their support and the funds that they have given to the Wilmington Public Schools and to the greater community for combating this effort of vaping as we're working hard with the school system and parents, staff, everyone who is supportive of our efforts. So we thank you all.
Thank you so much, Christine and Doreen. We appreciate that. Are there questions or comments from the committee? Mrs. Burns?
Hi, thank you. You've done such an amazing amount of work in a year's time, just to give us that structure that I think our schools need. I just had a couple of questions with regards to the vape educate curriculum. I kind of went on and perused that to see what that looked like. I think it's great, but I was a little curious with regards to what, how are you purchasing the licenses for, I mean, I see that is per person licenses. What, how do, how does that work? I mean, per the need, I guess.
Exactly. So originally, we purchased one just to test out through the vaping committee, and the students actually took the whole quiz throughout, and they really thought it was student-friendly. So we were purchasing them just kind of on an as-needed trial basis. And then this past January, we said, okay, we really, through the grant, we have the funds to purchase them in bulk, and they were at a cheaper rate. So it's been super helpful with, if there's an extension with the schools now, that they will be extending their license to us. So it's been very user-friendly so far. I do think it was more of a pilot year of the administration getting used to it, the students taking it. But we were, we will be looking feedback from the students that have taken it as well.
Okay, because I wasn't sure, because I know that you have to renew the licensure every year. So I didn't know how, what that looked like.
It's from the date you purchase it. It lasts a year.
Okay. And I had a second question, if you can kindly refresh my memory. The five-week diversion program, how is that utilized? Is that for a second offense, or is that a program offered to students or pushed into health classes? I just, I'm not, forgive me, I'm not sure.
It's a great, great question. It is, at this point, being offered as a second offense, and we did not have any student as a reoffender this year. So we did have time to really have the vaping committee come up with a solid diversion program. We do have two families, as Doreen mentioned, that did reach out to us that they would want their child to be someone that could try the program out for us and really do it as a proactive educational piece, because they were having difficulties with their student vaping outside of school. So our ultimate goal is to be offering it as that measure. But right now, we did come up with it as the alternate to discipline.
Can I?
Yeah.
One more, I'm sorry. So what about second and third offenses? How, how are you, what are your thoughts in addressing that? I mean, since I know this is front-heavy on the first offense, which I think is great, but what's the, I mean, what's the occurrence, what's the repercussions, I guess, with regards to second and third offenses?
As far as the vaping diversion program and what we would offer at that point.
How would, right, would, I mean, would they do?
The violation, according to the handbook, was a seven days suspension at that point. But we are looking at ways that if there was a middle school student that had already taken the program and how we can kind of tweak that if they came up to the high school. So we're looking at possibly altering it as soon as, you know, if someone were to reoffend. But according to the handbook, it's seven days for the third offense.
Okay, thank you very much. I just thought that, you know, driving it home with education, you know, I think, you know, punishment is, you know, being strict with it is absolutely understandable. I'm not necessarily against that, but I think ongoing continuation with, you know, it's an, it's an addiction, you know? And without that support in that realm, I, you know, that's just a thought, you know, trying to support them through this process of kicking it. So, but thank you so very, sorry. Thank you so very much.
That's part of it, too, with the addiction piece. We did talk a lot about that and what kind of resources at the end of the program can we provide to the student and the family to help beat that addiction as vaping can be very addictive. So there is that component into the program, and we'll continue to, as Doreen said, maintain what this looks like each year and improve it as best we can. But it's a, I tell you, the committee did a great job, and we're really proud of everyone's efforts. It was multiple people that that took to come up with this. So we're looking forward to hopefully not having to use it, but if we have to, I think it's a pretty solid program.
Thank you so very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Are there other questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Raxdale?
So I would like to know how the fifth grade, the anticipated fifth grade curriculum compares kind of scope-wise, obviously, it's going to be a far less scope and, you know, not as in-depth as the vape educate. But what are we trying to, I mean, having gone through the vape educate and seen what a comprehensive diversion program looks like, what are we trying to pull from that for the fifth grade curriculum?
So as of now, the health teachers are discussing vaping and have incorporated it into their lessons. It's probably a little bit more piecemealed and not a full curriculum as they have to get so many different topics into their curriculum in the fifth grade. We did have, part of the program was having, Jocelyn White did come down as she is a senior, but she did educate at the intermediate level and did some presentations. But we are looking to refine that a little bit, you know, more solid with the curriculum. There are a lot of free online and in-class curriculums that are being offered, so we're really looking at some different ones. It does flow nicely into the middle school as they work on the life skills curriculum in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. The health teachers are really talking about tobacco and vaping in the middle school. And then that falls into if there was that one in-school suspension, that person would then take the vape educate.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Seeing them, thank you very, very much. We really appreciate the update, and it is nice to get back to some business as usual. So we appreciate your presentation. Thank you so much for being here. All right, next, we have FY20 revolving account report, Mr. Rogirio.
Hi, thank you. In your packet, you have the FY20 revolving account report. Again, as I had mentioned previously, that this is, it's a little bit of a mismatch as my cover memo stated, the expenses were up to date up through April 23rd. However, revenue was only posted through the end of December. So we're missing, you know, two to three months ballpark of revenue. So that's why you see some accounts that are not in the black right now, but we'll work on those and see where we are. Ms. Raffey, Ms. Morrison in my office, we're closely monitoring, looking at this, all these accounts, just to make sure we end up in the, in the, in the black. I would like to say one thing, food services on here, you can see that there is right now negative balance, but again, we're missing a couple, two, two and a half to three months, the three months of revenue. But on top of that, the work that Mary Palin and her staff are doing is phenomenal. The number of meals they are giving out is tremendous. They've given out over 6,000 bags of food, if you will, since March 20th. That equates to over 24,000 breakfasts and lunches. Just amazing. More recently, she's averaging over 500 bags, if you will, a day. So it's a great service to the community. We're so happy the community's taking advantage of it, and she and her staff are just doing yeoman's work. It's, it's just great to see. There will be some reimbursement for this, as the state has said that all these meals will be considered at the free rates, and Mary is working with the state and other organizations to see what other grants or funding is available to help this. But I think it's just a great service, and I just want to do, you know, just commend her for all the work she and her staff have done on this, because it's a great, great service for the, for the community.
Excellent, thank you. Are there any questions from the committee? About the revolving account report? All right, seeing none, we will move on to item E, which is the MSBA Statement of Interest Applications, be an update and then a vote, actually after each school. So I'll pass that over to Dr. Brand.
Great. And hopefully, this might be a little bit better. I know that there was some issues with my microphone earlier, so can you hear me all right?
It's okay. It's not great, but it's, is it better? Thumbs up if you think it's better, or maybe not.
Seems about the same, seems about the same to me.
About the same? We can hear you. Yes, you're much, it's just a different volume than the other speakers, that's all.
All right, well, I apologize about that, but I will try and remedy this for the next time around. There is a memo in your packet under this item. As members of the committee know, this has been a work that you have supported, the selectmen have supported, and I'm so thrilled for that, because I think that this is, this is exactly what the community needs, and that is to try and explore as quickly as possible what the future disposition is of our, of our, our very aged school facilities. They, MSBA stands for the Massachusetts School Building Authority, as you know, and it is a grant program in the state, the only grant program that helps support communities and districts in offsetting costs for new construction or renovation. The window of application only opens up once per year, and that window for this type of school building, potential school building, is open only until next Wednesday, I think it is May the 6th. There are some very specific guidelines, like all grant programs, and this one is no exception. And in particular, in this case, the authorization actually goes to the school superintendent to submit applications. We have talked previously about the thinking around submitting multiple applications, in fact, six, as we'll talk about in a moment, for all six elementary schools. I would take the opportunity to remind members of the community that the recently completed facility master plan in Wilmington did identify school consolidation as, as really a meaningful path to explore, and it might be something to consider as a future direction for the town to take. And so we are keeping that in mind. The SOI, as it's referred to, the acronym, stands for Statement of Interest. And really what this program ultimately signals, with your hopeful vote tonight, is to allow myself, but obviously with a whole lot of assistance, to submit applications for all six elementary schools. And what it, what it conveys to the Mass School Building Authority is that we believe that we have a number of facility needs as it relates to our infrastructure and our aged facilities, and we would like to have the MSBA grant program consider Wilmington as a potential partner down the road. The reality is that there are far more applications every single year than there are actual statement of interests that are accepted. That number varies from year to year, but I think if you were to ask people, and from what my understanding is, an average might be somewhere in the neighborhood of 70, 80, 90 applications. How many actually get moved forward, that depends on the building sizes, but sometimes can be as low as 12. It really depends. And of course, like everything financially right now, we'll see what, hopefully, this program is able to certainly maintain itself with the fiscal affairs that are swirling around us. The memo provides an overview of one of the other obligations, and that is, as a district that would be submitting more than one statement of interest, we do have an obligation to select one priority project. We do have an obligation to select one priority project. And it continues to be uh my recommendation that the Wildwood School uh is that priority project. That is not to take away from respective needs, in, in my opinion, at all of our schools. Uh, but certainly the Wildwood, um, I, I believe is in, in the worst condition and really uh needs to have attention. Much sooner than later. There's a very uh methodical aspect to the process that I won't take time to get into unless you have questions about it. Um, thank you to Mr. Regirio who's been doing a lot of work behind the scenes to make sure that we have. Our I's dotted and T's crossed, if you will, in following all of the respective steps. Um, and that includes this evening, having you as a committee uh take a, a vote. And in fact, you do need to take uh six separate votes, uh, if you are inclined to authorize the submission of these six Statement of Interests. Um, following uh the hopeful vote this evening. The next step is to finalize the documentation and data. Uh, that we will, uh, we've been working with Mr. Hooper's assistants to put together. And um, we'll be submitting that to MSBA uh next week, as I mentioned. Once those applications are finalized, I will be sure to, to provide the committee with a copy of all of those. Um, and um, following that, then we wait. Uh, we wait and we um. Uh, we will see what the interest in the reception is on MSBA's part. Uh, to in fact, perhaps um coming out, learning more about Wilmington and then down the road exploring a possible partnership. So with all of that said, I'll, I'll pause and if you have any specific questions about the process. Uh, what we've been doing to, to uh provide the information for the SOIs. Um, and then on finally in the memo, you'll, you'll see the vote language as mentioned. It is repetitive, fortunately it needs to be, uh, as per the guidelines from MSBA. Uh, Paul, I'm not sure if I forgot anything that you think maybe should be shared or, and again, if, if, please add, feel free to add in and if you have any questions, happy to try and answer.
I think you covered everything.
Any questions from the committee before we vote? Mr. Raxdale?
Could you expand um quickly on the uh. On engaging the services of a firm for um an interim plan to relocate the Wildwood?
Sure. Um, so even in the best case scenario, um, if we were, uh, we were to apply for these uh statement, for these statement of interests. Um, even in the best case scenario, and we were to find ourselves successful, ordered of, on the path to work. Partnership. Um, as I think I've mentioned before, the general timeframe that the MSBA uh uses um is, is approximately between. Uh, four to usually more like five to seven years until a new or new or renovated facility is ready to occupy. I, I do not think uh that the Wildwood School has anywhere close to that amount of time, quite frankly. And so uh, the recommendation is to secure a third party. As part of a capital request uh for the FY, as part of the FY twenty-one budget. Uh, to assist the district and the community of Wilmington to study what other options on an interim measure would be for the Wildwood School. And, and, and maybe that's Band-Aid patchwork for the Wildwood staying there. I, I'm not sure, uh, but, but that's, I suppose, a possibility. But more likely around what an internal reorganization perhaps might be. To incorporate the students, the staff and programs into our other existing spaces. Or perhaps also look at such things as rental space um or modular classrooms. Uh, and certainly that level of expertise is one that, that we don't have. And so securing a third party to help assist with that and develop plan with options is what we would be, um, what we would pursue with that capital request.
Okay, and we, we approved that two hundred thousand dollars in the, in the budget, or rather approved the requests uh to go forward.
We, we did and um, and, and, and that's right, and, and part of that is, is tried to capture in the memo. Is one of the things since we um, forgive me for not um highlighting that. One of the things that came to uh our realization through subsequent conversations with the MSBA. Um, is that in fact, if uh, if Wilmington were to be successful in our bid. Uh, for these applications. That um, that kind of level of study, that detailed study. That was really being advanced with that two hundred thousand would actually be part of the process. With MSBA and what that would mean is that there would be an offset. Uh, as we understand it, to the ad overall cost. So in other words, um, if the project to. To study the various options uh were to be, say, two hundred thousand dollars, which we were anticipating it to be. Uh, the MSBA reimbursement rate that would be locked in for Wilmington. That would be able to be applied to such a cost, so there would be a cost savings to Wilmington, so. In learning upon that, and, and that was a conversation, I think it was last week that we had. The conversation with the town manager, we thought, you know, given that understanding, which we did not have previously. Uh, that seems to be uh certainly the best interest of Wilmington and so um. The intention here is to modify that original capital uh expenditure level. Paul, would you add anything to that at all?
No, I think you covered it. Throughout the discussion, uh, the MSBA had indicated that. If we had spent, we'll use the two hundred thousand as an example to do that type of study on, on our own. We apply, we submit the SOIs, we get invited in. We would probably have to do that same work all over, so the two hundred thousand that we spent. We'd spend again, if you will, and then yes, we would have some uh reimbursement on that incremental, but we still would have spent. You know, the same money twice almost, so that, that was the decision we made.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Okay, seeing none, we will, I will read. The language and then we'll do a first, a second, and we'll do vote by roll call? Or hands?
Probably roll call, I think.
Thanks. All right. Here's our first one. Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty, prior to the SOI submission closing date. School Committee of Wilmington, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent. To submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated on or before May sixth, twenty-twenty. For the Wildwood Early Childhood Center located at one eighty-two Wildwood Street, Wilmington, Mass. zero one eight eight seven. Which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority category for which an application may be submitted. To the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. The Statement of Interest is being submitted under Priority Seven and is for the replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings. In order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form. The Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application. The awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Or commits the town of Wilmington to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Anybody? Thank you, Mr. Raxdale. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fennelly, thank you. Steve Bjork?
Yes.
MJ Burns?
Yes.
Jesse Fennelly?
Yes.
Joe Newhouse? David Raxdale?
Yes.
Jason Maha?
Yes.
Jen Bryson, yes. All right. Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty, prior to the SOI submission closing date. The School Committee of Wilmington, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent. To submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated on or before May sixth, twenty-twenty. For the Boutwell Early Childhood Center located at seventeen Boutwell Street, Wilmington, Mass. zero one eight eight seven. Which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority category for which an application may be submitted. To the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. The Statement of Interest is being submitted under Priority Seven and is for the replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings. In order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form. The Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application. The awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Or commits the town of Wilmington to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Thank you, Mr. Raxdale, seconded by Mrs. Burns. Excellent. Steve Bjork?
Yes.
MJ Burns?
Yes.
Jesse Fennelly?
Yes.
Joe Newhouse? David Raxdale?
Yes.
Jay Samaha?
Yes.
Jen Bryson, yes. Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty, prior to the SOI submission closing date. School Committee of Wilmington, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent. To submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated on or before May sixth, twenty-twenty. For the Woburn Street Elementary School located at two-two-seven Woburn Street, Wilmington, Mass. zero one eight eight seven. Which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority category for which an application may be submitted. To the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. The Statement of Interest is being submitted under Priority Seven and is for the replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings. In order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form. The Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application. The awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Or commits the town of Wilmington to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Fennelly, seconded by Mr. Samaha. Steve Bjork?
Yes. Yes.
MJ Burns?
Yes.
Jesse Fennelly?
Yes.
Joe Newhouse?
Yes.
David Raxdale?
Yes.
Jay Samaha?
Yes.
Jen Bryson, yes. Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty, prior to the SOI submission closing date. The School Committee of Wilmington, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent. To submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated on or before May sixth, twenty-twenty. For the Shawshin Elementary School located at two ninety-eight Shawshin Avenue, Wilmington, Mass. zero one eight eight seven. Which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority category for which an application may be submitted. Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. The Statement of Interest is being submitted under Priority Seven. And is for the replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form. The Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application. The awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Or commits the town of Wilmington to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mrs. Newhouse. Steve Bjork?
Yes.
Jay Burns?
Yes.
Jesse Fennelly?
Yes.
Joe Newhouse? David Raxdale?
Yes.
Jay Samaha?
Yes.
Jen Bryson, yes. Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty, prior to the SOI submission closing date. The School Committee of Wilmington, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent. To submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated on or before May sixth, twenty-twenty. For the North Intermediate School located at three twenty Salem Street, Wilmington, Mass. zero one eight eight seven. Which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority category for which an application may be submitted. To the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. The Statement of Interest is being submitted under Priority Seven and is for the replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings. In order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form. The Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application. The awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Or commits the town of Wilmington to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Mr. Fennelly, thank you, seconded by Mrs. Newhouse. Steve Bjork?
Yes, you think I'd be ready with the mute button by now?
Maybe you can unmute yourselves now?
I don't know, somebody's still working in the kitchen, I think.
MJ Byrne?
Yes.
Jesse Fennelly?
Yes.
Joe Newhouse? David Raxdale?
Yes.
Jay Samaha?
Yes.
Jen Bryson, yes. Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty, prior to the SOI submission closing date. School Committee of Wilmington, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent. To submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Statement of Interest Form dated on or before May sixth, twenty-twenty, for the West Intermediate School. Located at twenty-two Carter Lane, Wilmington, Mass. zero one eight eight seven. Which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the priority category for which an application may be submitted. To the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. The Statement of Interest is being submitted under Priority Seven. And is for the replacement of or addition to obsolete buildings. In order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approved local requirements. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form. Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application. The awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Or commits the town of Wilmington to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mr. Raxdale. Steve Bjork?
Yes.
MJ Byrne?
Yes.
Jesse Fennelly?
Yes.
Joe Newhouse?
Yes.
David Raxdale?
Yes.
Jay Samaha?
Yes.
Jen Bryson, yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Did I get them all?
Yeah.
You did.
Excellent. All right.
Thought it was going to be five to seven years before we got through the reading of those motions.
Just, thank you, thank you, Dr. Brand and Mr. Regirio and everybody else behind the scenes. SOIs, we know it is, this was not a um, a, a small task. We can tell just by the reading of those motions, so. People appreciate it.
Well. We, uh, thank you for your uh support, um, and uh, obviously we will cross our fingers and, and, and hope that we uh. Able to put our best foot forward, so thank you very much for, you know, that was, that was, that was long, but you did a great job, so thank you.
Excellent, thank you, everybody. All right, um, that brings us to item F, Superintendent Goals Final Update Evaluation Process. And I'll pass that to you, Dr. Brand, first, and then I'll just talk a bit about next steps.
Thank you. Um, so um, uh, the, the title perhaps uh, uh, a bit inaccurate in, in. Um, it, it's not my intention this evening, as you'll see, uh, there is, I should have said, a memo in your packet. It's not my intention this evening to provide you with a final update, but I did want to um speak a little bit about um my thoughts going forward and that is. Uh, this was originally the date, uh, April twenty-ninth meeting this evening, uh, in which we had at the big. Beginning of the year, I think it was, uh, scheduled this as the, the intention to try and report out. I, I did request uh from Miss Bryson, uh, if I could have another meeting. It's been, as you know, we all know, so it's certainly a very busy time and I thought to do justice to. Uh, what is a very important part of this process, uh, I know for you as it is for me. I, I requested if we could uh wait until the next meeting, which is scheduled. It's my intention at that meeting, um, to provide uh the final, uh, as it were, year-end report on the, specifically on my goals. Uh, that I set at the beginning of the year. I am working and work's already begun and I do believe you have access to it and will continue, I will continue. But honestly, with Miss Dixie's help to expand the evidence there. Um, it, I, I think it's only appropriate to try and provide you as committee members with. Um, the various artifacts that might be helpful uh in your, in your assessment. Of my performance as your superintendent, obviously as it relates as well to the goals. Um, most of this information has come before you through school committee packets. But there's an awful lot of information that comes before you, obviously through the packets and so uh, to the extent that I can try and make it a. Year for you is, is the goal there to do so. I will provide that um updated the next meeting um on all of the goals. the goals. And I'm pleased to be able to say that before we went into this, this COVID-19 situation, a lot of work had been, certainly had, pleased to say, we're making some good progress in a lot of the areas. Things have certainly taken a little bit of a different turn in direction since the middle of March, as you might imagine. But with that said, I still will provide you with an update, some timelines and a couple of cases going forward that will obviously have to blend into either the summer or the beginning of next year. But it's an important opportunity to do so. And I look forward to, obviously, gathering your feedback through this, as I said, this very important process. So, there's another item in addition to the memo that's in your packet that you have, that, again, Ms. Dixie has started to populate with some items in there. Perhaps you've taken a look. If not, that's all right. I will be sure to roll over this folder and access to that for your future meetings as well, too. And then with that, I guess I'll turn it back over to Ms. Bryson, just to sort of talk about the next, the next steps.
Sure, thank you. So, the next step will be to convene the superintendent evaluation subcommittee, come up with a timeline for submission from the committee members of the summit of evaluation, and then a time for us to meet to review all of those summit of evaluations. And then we will draft the final one before presenting it to Dr. Brand at one of our last meetings. And so, that will be something we'll decide as a subcommittee. We'll bring it back to the full committee, probably May 13th as well. So, if you're on that subcommittee, I will reach out to you this week to schedule something. Are there questions? We are pop, I'm populating the summit of evaluation. It's not the one in there, isn't it, it's, there's an example, and there is a blank one. But what I'm going to, what I'm doing is going in and just putting in the goals with Dr. Brand's putting in the goals, and we're adding the descriptions, so that when you, when it's your, when it's time for you to complete that, it will already be populated with all of the goals and descriptions. So you won't have to go look for that. So, we'll try and make it as straightforward as possible. Questions?
That's great. Thank you.
Mr. Ragsdale?
I seem to remember that when we had our meeting with Ms. Presser and discussed superintendent evaluation, that we had talked about deciding as a committee which, what subset of indicators we were going to use for the evaluation. Is that something that you plan to first discuss in the subcommittee and then bring back to the committee for us?
So, yes. And I think what Dorothy said was that you were using, we were using the indicators that were really based on the goals. And so, looking at Dr. Brand's goals and then matching up the indicators with the goals. So, as not to evaluate everything, but to really only evaluate those pieces that aligned with the goals. So, some of the work I'm doing right now is just making sure that that's very clear, the goals. That's not what we did last year. We, we looked at the goals, of course, but we actually used every single indicator. I will talk with the subcommittee about just about a few ideas. Should we sort of highlight the areas for people to focus exclusively on, and then also comment on other areas? But we'll bring it all back to you before anything is decided. But that would be something, I think, that the subcommittee would at least start to get a handle on, and then we'll bring it back to you at that next meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't know if that was something we were going to discuss as a full committee first or first of the subcommittee, but I think that makes sense to do it in the subcommittee first.
Great, thank you. Any other questions about this? Okay. Excellent. Thank you so much. And that brings us to item G, which is first reading of revised policies. And there are just four. Let me pull those up. It might, if I'm remembering correctly from just previewing, ADDAE1 and E2 are actually, we're suggesting removal. And I believe Mr. Ragsdale, those were, those were the ones that you had reviewed. You want to just walk us through that?
Certainly.
All right.
Sorry, pulling, pulling that up.
I am too, sorry. Yep.
So, the, right, so ADDA, the Process Correcting Criminal Record, these were, I mean, these were some complicated policies, but essentially, this was not listed, the specific one was not listed on the MASU website, and I think was considered just not necessary, that we already had in the prior policies. We had these, the query, all of the query and criminal record investigation aspects covered.
And I believe that, we did ask counsel about this, and that memo is in there as well. And so, you'll notice that, reading attorney's seat, and you go down to item number two, it says, regarding the necessity of policies and their origin, policy ADDAE1 has been copied verbatim from a publication of mass.gov. ADDAE2 has also been copied verbatim, but unfortunately, its information is outdated. In response to the questions laid out, neither of these sections is required by law to be kept in the school committee's policy manual. Both can be fully eliminated from the manual. If the committee wants to keep ADDAE2 for some reason, will need to be edited and updated to comply with the current state of the law. Okay. Other, other questions or comments about those first two? Mrs. Burns?
As, my first comment, as it applies to ADDAE1, I don't see any reason why that should be a part of our policy. I think it's a, I think it's a whole different animal to begin with, and just not appropriate per se. But with regards to ADDAE2, I personally, because we do query checks, you know, with substitute teachers, coaches, the like, I think it does have merit in our school policy manual. And I would, I would prefer to retain, update it and retain it within our school policy, our district policies.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments about ADDAE2? Mr. Samaha?
I would say, I would be in favor of, of actually getting rid of both of them. I mean, I think from the, from the attorney's memo, I think makes sense to, to remove, if we don't, if they're not in MASU, and we're not like, we're not, we don't legally need to have them in there, then I say we don't have them in there.
Other thoughts? And where, I can, I just quickly ask, and I know that we, this is such a long time ago, but I do know the subcommittee had asked about where this, where this does exist. Obviously, we have query requirement somewhere. Where, where would that be? Dr. Brand or Mr. Giro? So if it's not here, take it out. Where is it?
I have, I have to double check on that. We have to double, Paul, unless you know?
No, I don't know what.
Okay. So, I think it may, probably makes sense to hold on the second one, just to see where it is. I think our understanding in the subcommittee was that it must be somewhere else. And so, let's check with counsel and see what they think. Mrs. Burns?
The other thing is, is I don't know, great, what I'm looking at is outdated. And I hadn't had an opportunity to review what the current language is. So, that would be, that may be helpful, but that, I, that may be helpful to review. I can certainly do though, do so in the future, but I didn't know if, when it comes back up, if, if that can be included as to what, what it could look like updated.
Okay. All right. We'll bring it back, and we will review ADDAE2. It looks like we're all comfortable with removing ADDAE1. Is there a motion? Mrs. Burns, is there, seconded by Mr. Fennelly, all in favor of removing ADDAE1? That is unanimous. We'll hold on E2, and let's move on to BGD. We can pull that one up. You'll see it's basically some word changes. Questions as you review that, or something you want to bring to our attention? Mrs. Burns?
As to what vernacular we, we use within it, procedures or regulations, I have no opinion on that note. But in, with respects to the item in this about school council versus school committee approving handbooks, school handbooks, it's always, I kind of wanted to touch upon that, because I think the school, I personally am of the opinion the school committee should do so, because handbooks do have to be aligned to our district policies. And...
Oh, Mrs. Burns, I lost you. Mrs., I can't, can you guys, can you hear her?
I can't, I can't hear her.
Mrs. Burns, I can't hear you, but I don't see you on mute. I'm not sure what's going on.
Oh. Engine not connection.
So, I missed the last part of what you're saying, but I think what is written here, it says, these handbooks will be reviewed and approved annually by the school councils and school committee. So, I think that we were thinking that we would leave that in.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Am I correct, subcommittee? That was my understanding. I know it's been a while, but that was my understanding.
Yeah, no, that was our thinking as well, that we, we thought that the committee should approve it.
Yeah. That's left as, and the councils are the school advisory councils, the SACS. Is that good?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. It froze.
That's okay. I said the school councils are referring to the school advisory councils, what we would call SACS, and that's left in there. So, we would continue to review and approve.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions about BGD? Okay, is there a motion to approve? Anybody, anybody? Mr. Bjork, thank you, seconded by Mr. Fennelly, all in favor. And that is unanimous. Mrs. Dixie, thank you. And finally, that brings us to BID. So, if you could go to that one and take a look. That is the school committee member compensation and expenses. Questions, comments? Mrs. Burns?
I think I would, in what was recommended by our attorney, I think keeping the, the school committee shall serve without compensation and putting a period there and foregoing everything else would, would be what I, where, what I would change.
Which I thought actually was what we were going to do, based on our last discussion, I know was months ago, but I thought that...
I'm sorry, forgive me if I...
No, it's okay, but you're, it doesn't say that there. Are there any other comments? Subcommittee, was that, does that seem, does that seem right? So, we would end with, the school committee shall not, shall serve without compensation, period.
I think that we, I think that we were going to, first of all, I think we were going to take out the regional school district or superintendency union, since they did not apply. But we're going to leave the language about a majority town vote at town meeting, because it came out of the MGL, and that we were just going to preserve that language from the state law.
Okay.
Is that your, Jesse?
That was, yeah, that was my recollection as well.
Just to revisit that, I, I don't know of a, because we are a board that serves without compensation, I, I don't know under what circumstances that would even apply to. Anybody? Haven't, you know, I, I don't.
Right. Now, I think we had this conversation last time. We can revisit it. Counsel does say here on that entire section, I would either edit this sentence accordingly or delete it entirely. Remainder of the policy is very good as is. So, should we wait and just review MGL one, one last time, or just check with counsel one last time, or are we comfortable deleting it? Mr. Fennelly?
I, I mean, I'm okay with, with, if you guys want to check with counsel, but I think if I remember, maybe I'm misremembering the conversation, but isn't it essentially just saying that we serve without compensation, essentially unless the town, out of town meeting decided that for some reason we should be compensated?
Oh, is that what it references?
And I don't, I don't mean to be snarky in any way, which, it seems unlikely, but there's, I mean, there's certainly a possibility that at some time down the line, somebody could petition town meeting to say, hey, I think the school committee should get 500 bucks a year, or whatever it is. And this would sort of allow that to take place, was, that was my understanding, but I don't know that that's necessarily the case.
I didn't, I didn't, I'm sorry, I may misunderstand the, I may be the one misunderstanding the language behind that. So, that, you know, it might just be my lack of clarity. So, no, that makes, well, that makes sense, so.
Okay.
Thank you for clarification.
Looks like we will keep it, however, we should still delete regional school district or superintendency union, correct, Mr. Ragsdale?
Yeah, I think so, that they, they don't apply to us, and so, we, we don't need to have that in our policy.
Okay.
I mean, that's why we, that's why we also deleted all of the chart, charter of the veto of the city council and charter of such a city and so forth. It's all the same reason.
Yeah. Okay. So, if we make those edits, and then the strikeouts as listed here, would like to make a motion to approve BID?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Bjork. Is there a second? Mr. Fennelly, thank you.
Don't we need to, not need to approve this? That's just the first reading. There's nothing to approve.
Gosh. I'm moving right on to the second. We just realized that now?
And it feels like the second at this point.
Isn't this the second?
I think, I think we have, we have looked at this before, so.
Have, I, thank you. Although, we already approved all the other ones, so I guess we're moving right on to third reading next time. Anyway, yes, thank you. Okay. Are there? So, we are all set with those. We'll bring those back for a second reading next time. Sorry, Mrs. Dixie, I know we're making this very complicated.
That's okay. I forgot that we weren't voting on them either, so.
It's been a long time. It'll take us a while to get back into the groove of the, of the policy. All right. Are there a subcommittee report? Being none? Correspondence?
None this evening.
Thank you. Future school committee dates and notable agenda items. We obviously have our two meetings in May, May 13th and May 27th. They will be on Zoom. If the public would like to submit public comment, there is a Google form you may fill out that is due by 4:00 PM the day of the meeting. So, if you are interested in offering public comment, please look for that. We have the Zoom meetings with finalists for the assistant superintendents tomorrow at 4:00 and 4:45, and Friday at 4:00 and 4:45. The Zoom links will be posted on the website, Dr. Brand?
We will, yes. And we'll make sure that we push the vote again as well.
Excellent. We really encourage you to, to try and log in. One, it looks much better if there are, if there are many people there. And it's also, importantly, your chance to get to talk with and meet the future assistant superintendent. So, please put that into your calendars if you are able. And then, the virtual parent webinars that we discussed at the beginning of the meeting, please look for information on that as that comes to you. Is there anything else I missed?
No, but if I just may, really quickly, just as a reminder for our community, understanding that people are, are very overwhelmed with a lot of information swirling about, but just as a, as a plug and a reminder for the collection of resources on the district's website under COVID-19 that maybe have helped during these challenging times, not just about education, but, but also about taking care of your children and taking care of each other. So, there's a nice collection of resources there, and there's also links to other places that have, have certainly more information. So, just a reminder for members of our community for that.
Excellent. Thank you. And again, thank you to our leadership team, to food services, to our teachers and counselors, and everyone who is ensuring that our students are, are working hard and staying healthy. There's nothing further. There's one final motion for adjournment. Anybody?
So moved.
Mrs. Burns, seconded by...
Oh, make a second.
Mr. Bjork, thank you, all in favor? That looks unanimous. All right. Good night, everybody. Thank you very much.